Uh, start this meeting officially for the audit committee. So first of all, I want to recognize my colleagues on the audit committee counselor, uh, Zaida Del Ron and Counselor Tim Allen. Thank you guys for joining. Uh, here at City Hall, we have with us, uh, Young No from the auditor's office, or the auditor, excuse me, and Mr. Pat Burns. Um, and Mr. No, do you want to recognize folks that you have?
Yes, um, so today we have, um, representatives of Markham LLP. Um, they are the city's, uh, independent, uh, external auditors. Todd Jurzick is the principal with Markham, uh, along with Jim Powers. He's also a principal, uh, at Markham LLP. So they will present, uh, the results of their audit for fiscal year twenty-three.
Right, so I'll throw it into your court.
Hi, coming over to us now?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, um, hi, everybody. I'm pleased to be with you tonight. And, uh, obviously, we're going to go over, uh, the highlights of the fiscal year twenty-three audit. Um, I know it's a little bit late. We finished the actually audit report way back, uh, in actually calendar year twenty-three. I think it was at the end of November or sometime in there. But schedules being such as they are in finalizing reconciliations, we're here now. Um, doesn't mean that it's any less important, uh, but, uh, an overview to the audit itself, uh, through, uh, all departments, school, treasurer's office, collectors, uh, nose, office, everybody, uh, we think it went, uh, very well this year. Uh, everything that we asked for were given to us on a somewhat timely basis as we went through. Uh, we had no audit adjustments as we went through the, the audit. Um, we helped the city put together the financial statements, but just more of drafting them for, uh, the financial statements because they are the city's financials. We just do it all the time, so it's easier for us to compile that information. Uh, the city takes full responsibility of the accuracy of the audit information that's presented both in the, uh, uh, financial statements and the reports on schedule of federal awards. Uh, in all of the reports, we have what's called an unmodified opinion, uh, meaning that, um, our basic, uh, duty is to, in effect, audit the numbers, uh, as we go through everything to make sure that we agree with what is being presented to us as being an accurate, uh, and, um, representation of your results of operation and your financial condition as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we were able to accomplish that through a lot of procedures that are required, uh, interaction between us and city folks to, to go through everything. Um, best report you can get, uh, even on the, uh, reports on federal awards programs, we had no findings, even though you spend a lot of money and have some new grants, especially with Opera and a few other things going through. Uh, great job by the city, making sure that, uh, you have an accurate representation of, um, of that. So, um, that's kind of just an overview, uh, the three reports that we have in front of you to now is we, like I said, the reports on schedule, on federal award programs, the comprehensive, uh, the annual comprehensive financial report, the ACRA, uh, which is again, an award-winning, uh, report that you've had, and the, uh, management letter, where we have a couple of, uh, older findings and a couple of new findings. Uh, how would you like us to proceed going through each one of these reports? We can, I can pick the couple of small ones first and then finish up with the ACRA? Is that, uh, preferable to? Does that sound okay?
Sounds okay.
Okay. All right. So why don't we just start with the management letter if, if we could?
Sharing your screen, um, since we have people, um, uh,
I do, don't have that, uh, but, um, Todd, would you mind going over the management letter while I pull up on my screen the, um, these reports?
Sure.
Sorry, didn't, not everybody had copies of it, my fault.
If you could read, um, you know, just the summary comments, I'm gonna be in the car, so.
Yeah.
Not, it's not in the car yet, but I will be in five minutes, so.
Okay.
You know, that's, not the detailed, you know, just the, the overview, mo- you know, high-level comments kind of thing.
Sure. So, uh, the letter for this year is actually, well, I guess, compared across the base of some of our other clients, it's, uh, relatively small. There were a few comments that from the, there were, we had touched upon in FY twenty-one, uh, excuse me, FY twenty-two, that, uh, the city had resolved during the course of fiscal year twenty-three. And those are relative to cash reconciliations, uh, cash receivable reconciliations and the timeliness of it. That was a, a little bit of an issue, uh, during the FY twenty-two cycle. But that rectified itself, uh, over the course of the fiscal year twenty-three. And then there was another comment from FY twenty-two relative to, um, the manner in which required payroll changes were communicated, um, from the employee level up to full execution within the payroll system. And that, again, was resolved. And there was one carryover comment from the prior, from FY twenty-two relative to, um, the fuel pumps at the golf courses. Uh, just, we, we made some comments that the technologies appear to be a little bit out of date. And, um, it would be, uh, you know, it, it's something you, the city wants to get on its capital plan if it isn't already. And, uh, from what we understand, there's some funds that were earmarked during FY twenty-two, or FY twenty-four to, uh, to, to actually indeed go out and purchase new fuel pumps. So we would expect this comment to go away when we, you know, when we issue next year's reports. And then the final comment, uh, comment, really not a management letter, you know, uh, a concern about controls over, uh, financial reporting, but just more of an informational comment relative to the funding of the retirement system. Uh, and it's, it's a matter that we've been commenting on over the past couple of years. No surprise that the city's retirement system is, um, you know, certainly below the forty percent mark, which is, uh, um, yeah, a little, little bit concerning. Um, but, and we, and I do want to note that, you know, we, we did notice that the city has made efforts to increase its appropriations to the system over the course of time. Um, but when you compare the city's retirement system to some of the systems across the Commonwealth, it's, um, it, it's certainly in the lower tier in terms of funded status. So, uh, again, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies relative to internal control over financial reporting. Um, so that means we're, we're in an environment where reconciliations on the major accounts are occurring regularly and timely, which is, um, which is, which is a vital key element of internal control. So, um, so that, that's in good standing there. And, and the rest, like, as I said, the rest of the matters are, um, stuff we, we expect to sort of be addressed over the course of time, uh, as funding allows. But we felt it wouldn't be appropriate not to comment on the retirement piece, just to get on everybody's agenda. And that's it as far as the management letter.
Hey.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Could I, yeah, could I make a comment? Are we gonna move on to the next one, or are we, can we comment on this one?
We'll take questions as we go through, makes the most sense to.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. Go ahead, Counselor, if you have a question on this specific.
Yeah, well, um, I guess the main thing is the pension. And, uh, you know, the guy who knows the most about the pension is sitting there, Pat Burns. And he and I, and, you know, he particularly, and the council, probably led by me and Mike Fenton, have really, um, been on a mission to get back, uh, and make up for the mistakes of the past, whatever caused the fact that we, when we got on the council, we were twenty-six percent funded and, um, I don't know what that shows. We had flirted with forty percent. Uh, but I don't know what this report shows, but, um, you know, I just, I think, eh, maybe you should make more comments about the positivity of doing what we're doing, because it's massive. Uh, it's, it's im- impossible almost to catch up. And the efforts we'd made with the mayor and the finance team and the council working together, I would suggest is about some of the best work we've done in the last ten or fifteen years. And I've been on fifteen years. And, uh, I'm not sure what else we could do besides, unless we had a huge infusion of cash. We have put up with the nine percent increases every year. I don't know if we got the new number. I mean, I've been on vacation the last couple of weeks, so I'm a little bit out of, out of touch, but, um, you know, I think you al- almost should make a stronger, I don't know what you wrote, but the concern has absolutely been heard and acted upon. And, um, I think it would be fair to consider saying more, uh, in the positive sense, while you're saying the negatives. I mean, we couldn't have done any more than we've done. And, um, it's been with a total, I don't know, within City Hall, if I'm missing something, but in terms of a teamwork point of view and, and commitment that's held up, uh, amongst all of us, the mayor's office, the finance team, and the council, it's been amazing that we're where we are, considering how much more the thing is every year. Um, so what, what percentage funding did it, that, that, does it, uh, does it say where you are?
So as of, so, um, as of the most recent valuation that, you want to go, Jim, or?
I, I can go, it doesn't matter. So, I kind of agree what, Tim, I, I kind of agree what you're, you, you're talking about over the last ten years. Ten years ago, back in, uh, two thousand and fourteen, you were twenty-eight percent unfunded. Okay, and you're, that, you got into a hole early on, uh, and over the last ten years, you've been trying to, like you said, you've got nine percent increases in your, uh, funding each year. So, um, i- if you take a look at the last several years, as you go through, you went from, you know, fifty million dollars worth of a contribution in two thousand and sixteen, to fifty-seven million, to sixty-seven million, to seventy-two, to seventy-eight, to eighty-five, to ninety-three, uh, this year, um, making a substantial, uh, hit of, uh, in, uh, a, a decrease in your unfunded liability. Um, and you s- you remained under thirty percent, um, up until, uh, two thousand and nineteen, where you hit thirty percent funding at one point in time. Um, now you're at thirty-three percent, last year at thirty-nine, uh, this year you're at thirty-five percent. But everybody last year had a bad year for investment income. You lost sixty million dollars in twelve thirty-one twenty-two, where in the previous year, you made eighty-seven million dollars at the end of twenty-one. I expect for the twenty-three audit, uh, which will be on the fiscal, um, uh, twenty-four's financial statements, I'd expect that to go up a lot because everybody's had a pretty good year and you've got an asset base of, you know, five hundred and, uh, fifty-one, um, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, an asset base of, uh, look, uh, uh, five hundred and nine million dollars. Uh, so that should help you with your investment income, give you another fifty, sixty million dollars worth of investment income. But yes, I agree, the funding schedule right now is planned to, I think, get you there by two thousand and thirty-four. You've got until two thousand and forty to do it legally. Um, but, you know, it, it takes away from operations, like you said, Tim. You know, where are you gonna find the additional money? Um, it's a legal requirement to get it done by two thousand and forty. Um, and so I think you, again, we, we don't comment necessarily on what you do, it's just the accuracy of the reporting. And so, um, it appears as you're doing a lot to catch up for the pastills, uh, but it's gonna take time and it's gonna hurt as you go through it. So it still doesn't change the fact that the end of twenty-two, you are still only thirty-six percent funded, as opposed to most communities, uh, your size and bigger, or not many bigger than you as, as you go through in Massachusetts, a hovering, you know, over fifty percent and low ones being fifty percent. Um, but this wasn't created in one day, it's been an accumulation, you know, going back to almost probably the control board, where it was, uh, the Gatsby wasn't around when that was, uh, implemented. But yeah, it's a main focus and it's, um, it's a big number as you go through. And then to add to that, as you go through, um, you have your OPEB fund, okay? So the other post-employment benefit funds. Um, now, that's not a legal requirement like the pension system. Pension system says you have to fund this according to mass law by two thousand and forty. The liability you owe to your retirees and your current employees, um, is not, is, all you have to do is fund this on a pay-as-you-go basis. So substantially, you have not, you've put some money away, but your total OPEB liability is a million, a billion, um, three hu- uh, two hundred and sixty million dollars. But you only have thirteen million dollars in your OPEB fund. So your unfunded OPEB liability is a billion two forty-six. And when you add that to the nine hundred and eighteen million dollars that you're unfunded, uh, in your pension plan, it's over two billion dollars. Um, and that's, those are real liabilities as you go through. And that's, you know, that is not an enviable position. Um, so I, I can't disagree with what Tim was saying is that, uh, those are the two big things that are making all the difference in your financial condition. Because if you look at your budgetary fund balance, or you're looking at, um, how well you do with your general fund or your cash, and how much you've used, you know, you, you're doing pretty well relative to that. But those are the, those are the big things that need to be discussed and figured out, and, um.
Thank you, thank you, Jim.
I don't know if you have anything else to add on that, but.
No, I think, I think you guys hit it good. I mean, this is essentially a snapshot of how the city is doing for, for this past fiscal year. And I, you know, I agree with Counselor Allen in terms of, you know, the city has done a lot of good work to get behind her. But you guys, as mentioned before by, uh, Todd, is, you know, definitely want to mention this as it's still, you know, relative to our peers, um, still something we need to be mindful of, so. So I appreciate that. I don't want to linger too much more on that, but we'd love to move on to the next, um, next topic.
Yeah. But, but just a quick, the, the, your accounting for it properly, that's not a problem. So your financial statements are accurate, they're just not showing a great position for obviously those two liabilities. But that's why you still have an unmodified audit opinion, because the accounting's correct.
Got it.
And that's the last thing I'll say on that.
I mean, is there any? Kat, uh, Kathy Bono is also here. I don't know if Kathy or Pat want to add anything to that before we move on?
Uh, the only thing I'll add is the retirement board does have a meeting scheduled for July thirtieth to adopt a new funding schedule. And, uh, they're gonna, Parax is gonna present the valuation as a one-one twenty-twenty-four. So, uh, encourage any members of the council that would like to attend, uh, that's Retirement Office is on Seventy Tadley Street in the DPW building.
What day was that here?
Uh, Tuesday, July thirtieth.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, no, I'm gonna move on to the next one.
Yeah, so Jim, if you could, uh, move on to, um, the rest of your presentation, just on the, uh, financial highlights, um.
The financial highlights? Yes. Um, as I said, the financial highlights are, uh, are pretty good as you go through. Um, and, and let me see if I can. Can you see my screen? Is it tiny like I see it?
Yeah, it's, it's small.
All right, how do I? I don't.
Oh, there you go.
All right, we're good on our end.
Can you see it?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I just don't see, I don't think I see the same, um, screen as you do, um, but.
I have a good screen, Jim.
You got a good screen?
Yeah.
All right.
Although now it went.
All right, I'm sorry, the, there we go. Forgive me, there we go, I got it. So the most, one of the more important ones to take a look at is in the back of the financial statements on page one oh six, this is the budget.
And this, uh, what you're saying right now is.
By, budget to actual report? I couldn't hear what someone said. Was that just?
Yeah, what, what we.
Maybe it was an echo coming back at me.
Is distorted. I don't know if that's on our end, or it looks a little.
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure either, to tell you the truth.
Um, thanks.
So.
Look, I can give it a try, Jim, from my end.
Why don't you try to share your.
Right, you're gonna have to stop on your end.
All right, so how do I get rid of?
Stop sharing.
Just, just stop sharing.
The bottom, bottom, uh, center of the screen, it looks like it says stop sharing.
Stop sharing? Um, says new share here. Sorry, I'm not.
That's all right.
Apologize for.
There we go.
There you go.
Cancel. There we go. All right, but as Todd gets to go there, what I'm talking about is, uh, the budget to actual is realistically the most important schedule. Gets the, the general fund budget and operations, and how well you budget against, uh, revenues and expenses and keeping things in line. Um, you had a pretty good year relative to that. And if I, um, you had budgeted, I can see that pretty good, Todd.
Okay, where, where do you want to go? Budget to actual?
Go to budget to actual.
Okay.
It's page hundred and fourteen, yeah, there we go.
Yeah, yeah.
So Todd has up the revenue side of this. And so you budgeted eight hundred and thirteen million dollars, eight hundred and fourteen million dollars of revenue for the year, the largest portion being state aid of five hundred and nine million dollars. And one of the things you want to see is the bottom right variance to final budget. It's a positive, that means you budgeted eight thirteen, you got in eight hundred and sixteen, and you're two and a half million dollars over budget. That in effect goes directly into free cash as an increase to your, um, uh, fund balance in the general fund. Um, all of these are in pretty good shapes, the two. Um, real estate, you always get a little bit low, but you catch up from the next year. Uh, you do a lot of leaning and your receivables are good. So although it's minus two, three, seven, eight, um, from the total, a lot of that was collected subsequent to year end. All right, and then in the expenditures section down below, for the ACRA, we have to break these down into each department. So you've got a little bit more detail than normal. And again, the budget section, as you see, which is the second column, you know, it starts with the three, four, five, two, and you spent, um, and again, Todd, just keep it rolled down, but the most important thing is look on the far right-hand side. We have got all positive variances to final budget, meaning that you didn't overspend your budget for the year, which is the objective as you're going through. And everybody has what's called turnbacks as you go through. And then if you go all the way down to the bottom, Todd.
Yep.
To where the total expenses are, uh, I don't see the total expenses yet, unless you.
All expenses right here.
Are you, are you down to the total expenses yet?
Yeah, seven hundred and ninety-five million.
Yeah, I just don't see it down there yet. Okay, so here's the, here's the same part as we're looking at it. Um, you've got total expenditures of seven hundred and ninety-five million dollars, um, fifty-three million dollars worth of carryovers that you're carrying over to next year, but you turned back, um, but you turned back, um, uh, what do you call it? Thirteen million nine oh five. And so in total for the year, again, very important, is you had a positive turnback and an increase to free cash of sixteen million three sixty-three. Um, that says you've managed your, your budget very well as you go through. All right, and so for the year, from the actual standpoint, um, you know, you've, you, you did a pretty good job relative to managing your budget. Now, the next section, other financing sources uses. And so the first line on it, use of prior year reserves, last year you carried over, like you see up, the fifty-three million eight fifty-two oh fifty. You carried that over to actually spend that money in fiscal two thousand and twenty-four. That thirty-seven million three fifty-eight is the same number, but carried forward from last year. That, that would have been part of last year's total fund balance, not part of free cash. So you used thirty-six million dollars worth of prior year fund balance in order to pay for the, the expenses this year. It's like a different funding source. And, and then you used ten million dollars, two lines down, of free cash to reduce the tax rate. So in effect, what you're doing, when you do that, you budget a loss. And then you used another fifty-six million dollars of free cash to fund the transfers out, and the notes of the financials will tell you where those were. And you can see the fifty-two million five two two. So it looks like for the year, you lost thirty-two million dollars. But it was intentional that you use those funds for capital and other purposes, because you had built up at a hundred and forty-five million dollars, a hundred and forty-six million dollars worth of fund balance through the end of fiscal year twenty-two. And what you have at the end of the year, going forward to twenty-four, you still have a, um, substantial, uh, fund balance at the end of the year of a hundred and thirteen million seven. Um, and that goes right forward to your entity-wide, uh, as you go through this. Any questions on the budget to actual?
No, I guess the only question I have for you is, is the use of free cash or prior year reserves. I mean, how typical is that in comparison? I know you mentioned the, um, retirement, uh, percentage that we have in, in comparison to other communities. I guess my question is, is how does that look like for us in comparison to like-minded cities?
Uh, it's the, the thirty-six million to carry forward, you know, for a community as large as you are, that is not out of line as we go through. That's, you know, pretty standard, everybody, you know, but, you know, you spent eight hundred and sixty-three million dollars, uh, I mean, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, uh, seven hundred and ninety-five million dollars, and you had eight sixty-three budgeted, so you raised funds in order to cover that. Um, so carrying over thirty-six million dollars is well, you know, if you look at, i- it's less than, you know, ten percent would be eighty-six million dollars, um, and. um, so it's less than five percent that you're carrying over. Uh, not, I would not be concerned about that at all relative to, uh, in relation to other communities. And the, and, and again, the use of free cash, you know, to fund transfers out, you know, that's funding stabilization funds, all other kinds of, um, uh, other purposes, it's funding, um, you know, things like, uh, capital projects as you go through and, and take a look at that. So, um, no, I don't see that as being any, any significant amount. A good part of that was stabilization fund as you go through.
Yeah. Um, if I could just chime back in, Jim, quickly, um, just going back to thirty-six million. Um, so yeah, that, that would have about thirty-three million dollars of that related to school uh, required carryforwards, um, under some of the various state regulations out there. So, uh, the balance of that would have been just from regular non-school departments funded by the general fund.
Yeah. And so if you, um, if you flipped up to the fund-based statements, Todd?
Yep.
Because remember we had a hundred and thirteen million dollars.
Want to go to the P and L?
Um, you know what? Um, go up to the, um, go up to the balance sheet down below. Yeah, right there. So that first column is the general fund. And inside of that general fund, we went from on the budgetary basis, like a hundred and thirteen million dollars worth of, um, funds that was carried over till next year. So the hundred and thirteen, six eighty-five that Todd just showed you. And now you see a hu- two hundred and one thousand dollars. There's a difference in presentation because of generally accepted accounting principles. The hundred and thirteen million dollars that you carried forward in the general fund does not include the eighty-eight million dollars of stabilization funds that for Massachusetts budgetary accounting, it's its own fund. For generally accepted accounting principles, it's part of your general fund. We have to combine those two. So if you ask why, why am I going from a hundred and thirteen to two hundred and one million dollars? There's not a lot of differences in the revenues and expenses as you go through this, some minor modified accrual adjustments. But that eighty-seven billion dollars is part of that. That eighty-seven million dollars is included in note nine on page eighty-five. And so the reader gets to see why that is, um, and, and we have a difference between the two. So just to bring you up, the results of operations, if you go back to the, uh, profit and loss, um, Todd, just go to the revenue expense statement.
Yep.
All right. And what you'll see is that, um, the, the transfers in and out are a lot lower because a lot of those transfers were transfers to and from the stabilization fund as you went through. And so those get netted over here. But in effect, you still, for your up above in your general fund, um, you had, um, still a six, six and a half million dollar in effect surplus in the general fund for that year. And then a million five in total because you don't put in all of those use of prior year reserves and the rest of those, those are just budgetary entries. They're not real cash in the door, cash out the door. So again, uh, you in effect broke even for the year when, uh, anybody's analyzing your financial condition. Um, to me, that's, that's a good sign as you go through. And then the other two funds in there is, you know, you've got a, um, COVID nineteen grant fund, um, which is the one with the million six oh seven in there. You had eighty-two million dollars worth of revenues and you spent eighty-two million dollars as part of that. Um, and so you are spending, um, a lot of the oppa funds and everything as you, um, see fit. One of the things that we discussed with the administration too, since they brought up the, the oppa funds, um, is just to make sure, uh, you're doing a good job of spending the funds. Um, we're seeing things done. I know, uh, the administration is chasing down some documentation from some of the grants that you gave out. Um, but it is now July of twenty-four. At twelve thirty-one twenty-four, there is a soft end to oppa, meaning that if you can't carry that forward unless you meet certain requirements for the oppa grants. And the city is aware of all of these. We had, we've had long discussions with them. But the only thing I want to stress again is you don't want to lose any oppa funds and I know, and then there's a plan to spend everything and make sure that if you carry over anything, that could be spent through twelve thirty-one twenty-six. You make sure that, you know, that's a good expense and you, you know, you're going to accomplish that. But it's running its course right now. And again, uh, I think the city's got a good handle on it. Um, but I just thought for the audit committee, we needed to, uh, bring that up again.
Appreciate that, Jim, because I know that. I know the finance team has kind of presented that to us before, and I know that they have a, a pretty strong plan to one, reach out to folks and ma- ensure that folks are using the funds and making sure that we don't lose any of that. So I know Kathy's talked about that in previous council meetings with us. Uh, but I want to make sure, are there any other councils that have any questions on any of this, this section of stuff?
I mean, those are.
Go ahead, Council. Go on.
I'm sorry, my, I can't find the raised hand as easily as I used to zoom change something. I apologize. Thank you so much with the chair. Um, and thank you for that report, Todd. Um, I think Todd was, or James, I'm sorry. Um, uh, this is good.
Okay.
Jim, thanks, Jim. Uh, no, this is a good report. Um, one thing about, um, the free cash. So you're saying when, when, when we use free cash to offset some, um, residential taxes that looks like a negative on our report, but it's really what we're doing for the, the community, correct?
Yes, there's some things that look negative, but it's doing for your long-term stability and things for the community.
Excellent. And, um, so regarding the oppa, so you're saying on twelve thirty-one at the end of this year, we have to have everything allocated, right? So it has to be for a certain program. It doesn't have to be spent necessarily. But by twenty twenty-six, it does have to be spent.
But allocated, you've got to be careful of the word allocated because it can't be just, oh, I think we're going to spend it on, you know, more grants to the communities. What you need to have in place is contracts. So say if you're building, you know, uh, doing some, um, uh, street work or whatever it is that might fall under this and say, I gotta, we have a, a, a ten million dollar contract for this. It can't be, you have to have a signed contract to call it committed, you know, with a contractor's, you'd have to finish your bidding process, you'd have to award the contract, and then they'd have to finish that by twelve thirty-one twenty-six. And usually it doesn't happen, but sometimes, um, it never really happens that all of a sudden the, the contractor comes in and said, yeah, you know what? I only needed nine million. We came in under budget. Okay. Um, but when does that really happen? Um.
Right, right.
And what would happen at that point in time if they finished the project and you saved a million? You'd have to turn the million dollars back to the feds.
Mm-hmm. Right. We don't want to do that for sure.
Yeah. So just make sure that you know that that particular contract, and you can do first in and first outs. Say if you had a ten million dollar contract, you know, you can tip, you can put two million of local money into the project and the first eight million is oppa type of thing.
Right.
So you know it won't go below eight, but it's still ten, so you're covered in that. So those are the type of things. And one of the things you can use Todd and I for, um, is if you have these things, uh, we can pre-audit anything because the things that you're going to be doing right now is for the fiscal twenty-five audit, not the fiscal twenty-four. So we won't see this activity until next summer. Okay? And so it, anybody can, you know, you guys have us here to say, well, is this going to be okay under the, the oppa? Would you mind auditing twenty-five before twenty-five? And we'll, we'll give you the go-ahead and just say, yeah, if you do it this way and spend the money as you've described, you will be okay from our audit standpoint. But if you spend it on something else, you're at risk.
Right, right.
And again, I hate to see anybody lose any of this money.
Right. Okay. Um, and my, and I agree with you. My concern would be the, um, the grants that the neighborhood councils got and Kathy probably knows about this. This is from, um, a headache. So the neighborhood councils are, were allocated a hundred thousand dollars and a, a lot of them have signed their contracts. Um, and I'm just, you know, hoping that we won't be able, we won't need to return any money to the federal government, of course. Um, but that program right there is one of the things that I'm thinking about. But thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You know what? Cause ju- just a quick note on that, you know, if you give the grants to the local in order for you to be in compliance, there is certain reporting that must be done by those getting the grants. And if they're not giving it to you, um, you know, if you ask me, uh, you know, you, you want to help everybody, but if they don't want to help themselves, you may have to then give that to someone else who will spend and do the reporting. You have to be a little heartless on this if they're not willing to cooperate with the administration who's trying to their best to, you know, make sure they get to spend the money, but they have to report back. So that's the only thing I'm, I'm saying. So people will complain, but if they don't do what they signed up for, you know?
Absolutely.
That's all on that. Yeah. All right. You're welcome.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. So, um, Jim, um, uh, is there anything else that you wanted to, um, convey to the audit committee, um, on your results of your audit?
Uh, no, I, I'm sorry, but I didn't really hear you on that.
Oh, is there anything else that you wanted to present, uh, from your, uh, audit results to the audit committee?
Yeah, yeah. It's just.
Go ahead, Todd.
Yeah, just, uh, in terms of, you know, again, it, our main scope is, is, um, the audit over financial reporting and the city's financial statements and the management did a great job this year, um, a- as they always have, um, in terms of maintaining a prop, you know, proper system, internal controls and keeping up to date on their account reconciliations and actually documenting their account, um, account reconciliations, which sometimes is half the battle. Um, it, um, you know, it, there, there's a well-oiled machine around City Hall from the, from the financial operations side, uh, as far as we're concerned. So, um, you know, I think any decisions that need to be made from a financial, uh, perspective, even at interim periods, you know, you know, forget us coming all, you know, coming along every year to do, to do a, a annual report to you folks, but any, um, any internal documentation that's shared, there's, there should be some sense of, um, that you can have a reliance to make, uh, you know, it is decisions that are appropriate for the community.
And it's a strong testament to Pat and Kathy.
You stole, you stole right out of my mouth. I was gonna say. New kudos to, to the financial, the finance team, uh, who've consistently performed. Um, and if, you know, as you said, well-oiled machine over the last several years since the control board. Um, so, you know, it's always good to hear that, you know, from outside firms in terms of the review of, of what we're doing here. So, so kudos to you guys. I don't know, Kathy and Pat, you just wanna, is your, is your moment to pop your collar?
I, I think it's more Pat now.
I think I'm getting old and I might be springing a leak and.
Uh, one other, one other thing I'd like to add, um, because a lot of times you were asking me questions about how you compare to other communities, et cetera.
Yes.
One of the best things Springfield did years and years ago was create the, the office and the position of the internal auditor. Um, that's an extra check and balance that makes our life easier. But it also makes sure that the, the quality of the reporting and what goes in and out. Um, and so if, uh, I would say just don't get rid of that position and, and I wish more of our clients had that. Um, it really does make a big difference in the good report that you're seeing tonight. And Pat does an okay job too, but.
Great. Because that is all, all we have. Any other, no other questions or comments? All right, um, Young, do we have to do anything in terms of approving or anything like that?
No, no. Uh, I think the next step here is I'll, I'll distribute the financial information and the, uh, external audit presentation to city council for, for their review. But, uh, that's all we need to do is just present, present it to the audit committee.
And that'll have all their notes and a summary, um, in terms of.
Yeah, it'll be the financial statements, um, uh, for FY twenty-three, it'll be this presentation here.
Yeah.
And the management letter comment.
Yeah, I think that'd be good just to have the, like I said, the summary, because I hope my colleagues will read all these documents, but it's always good just to have the Cliff Notes, uh, for them. So. But I think that's, all right. Well, if I have no other comments or questions, uh, five forty-six, uh, have the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Guys.
Thank you.
You all. Have a good day.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Talk to you soon.